This is episode 600 of the Rio Grande Foundation's Tipping Plate New Mexico. I'm Paul Guessing.
And I'm Wally Drangmeister.
I'm president of the Rio Grande Foundation in Mexico's free market think tank. You can find out more about the foundation at rio grande foundation dot O R G. Well, Wally, after weeks of speculation and back and forth, and quite frankly, I didn't think she would do it. He's gone ahead and done it. The governor has called a special session of the legislature to address public safety issues. Starting on July 18th. There are some details, of course, public safety. I think there may be some issues regarding. The. The parole, but the.
Oh, pre-trial detention.
Bail and other issues with regard to criminal justice policy. She's got some things that, quite frankly. I think she's going to have more trouble with her own people on the democratic side of the aisle than she will on the republican side. As far as I can tell, she's not so far, you know, again, we don't, we don't know all the details yet. We won't know that until very close to July 18th, but it doesn't look like she's putting gun control issues as traditionally understood on the agenda. So we will know more in July, but the governor has officially called a special session.
Yes, Paul, and you know, as you say, there's some information out there. Every article I read, I get more and more confused about what they are really going to try to address and what the focus will actually be. And so it will be interesting. And as you say, you know, the typical for almost all special sessions, but recently particularly with this administration in Santa Fe is. Things have been really, what shall we say, wired up before they even go to Santa Fe to do things. And right now, just based on, you know, news reports and what I'm hearing, it does not seem like that may be the case that time. So we might actually have a true legislation happen in Santa Fe and not just pass this and go home, but we'll have to wait and see. But at the end of the day, are there going to be laws? And if so, is there going to be enforcement of those laws? And is there going to be a process to where actually crime and public safety will be addressed or is or? Or not, because they, there has been a lot of smoke on some of these issues, but really not a lot of follow through end to end. That's made a difference here recently in New Mexico.
Yeah. I think, given the nature of special sessions in New Mexico, I've never seen one where it was kind of a freewheeling, wide open special session. There's always a very specific agenda as you head into them. I'm presuming, and again, we've seen this in the past in regular sessions where we would think that the governor would have the conversations with democrat leadership and members of her own party. Because they can essentially do whatever they want when they do get to Santa Fe. I do think, again, the buy-in from Speaker Martinez and Majority Leader Peter Worth, that is likely the largest hurdle that she's going to face. And maybe that she's already achieved, you know, overcome that hurdle and she's achieved some kind of resolution with those, those members on these issues. So we will stay tuned and stay on top of this. It doesn't look like any issues that really are going to raise the hackles of us here at the Rio Grande Foundation. In fact, again, generally addressing crime issues and doing so in a thoughtful way would be a big step forward. If that's something that can be done in a special session, so time will tell.
Yep, absolutely. It will be interesting. It always is. And so if this is another one where it's wired, it'll be a little excitement. But you know, there is a lot of difference of opinion in the democratic party, which is the party in charge in Santa Fe. And whether that raises its head, we'll have to wait and see.
Yeah, this week, the Rio Grande Foundation, in anticipation, knowing that a special session was in the offing or had been declared. We published a paper thanks to Steve Dodson of Roswell, a board member of the foundation and somebody who really is a knowledgeable individual when it comes to gun issues. He published for us a very short issue brief, looking at an example of the head of the New Mexico, the Mexican to prevent gun violence organization. Her name Miranda Viscoli and the paper details the Viscoli loophole, which as Steve Dodson notes involves. Somebody who is, I think, anti-gun would be the correct way to frame her, breaking numerous federal and state firearms laws with the intention of. Getting rid of, eliminating guns, destroying guns, you know, kind of the buy, gun buyback situation and not properly doing so. And even so far as going and giving high school students working weapons under the impression that these are destroyed and that they can be used in some kind of repurposing. Like an art project or something of the sort. It's a very short, brief, really four pages of text and details. Failure to conduct a background check on a private firearm sale in New Mexico, possession of a firearm on public school property, federal and state law, trading an unregistered, regulated short barrel rifle. Possibly transporting short barrel rifles across state lines to Colorado without notifying the ATF. So several violations of law and basically what Dodson's making the point here is that because of her position and ignorance of both firearms and the law. Viscoli appears like she is going to get out of any issues legally that might be, you know, might come about. So again, that's at rio grande foundation dot O R G. You can find that there.
Yeah, it is interesting how, well, people who, you know, who are trying to make a point, running afoul of the law. So that is indeed interesting. You know, it reminds me of the drug abuse education that I received in sixth grade. They had a board of look-alike drugs. It's almost like if she would have been in charge, maybe she would have used the real thing. She would have bought all the drugs of the day in and it's just unfortunate that that happened. But you know, this kind of repurposing for the schools, that's particularly, you know, it's like, yeah, let's, let's make art out of the, out of the guns that you, that you, you know, paid to get off the street. Just seems like maybe defeating the purpose at some level.
Yeah, well, you know, firearms are, are tools and just like any other tool in society. If you don't know anything about it, your tendency is to be fearful. Ignorance does breed that kind of fear and often bad behavior. The people who commit a vast majority of the crimes in this country are not trained firearm experts. They haven't taken NRA courses. They're not concealed carry permit holders. They are people who, you know, by and large, break the law and maybe they've learned through the school of hard knocks, so to speak, about guns. But most of them are not well-trained, well-versed in proper firearm techniques.
Yeah, no doubt about that. And then also a lot of the firearms they use certainly don't go through the labyrinth of current firearms regulations and regulation and accounting, much less any new ones that'll come in the future. Which is one of the, one of the big ironic issues of this whole gun debate.
Exactly. So shifting gears to an issue that's a little more in the bread and butter of the foundation in terms of our knowledge base. The federal Department of Education, a body that I think we'd probably agree, we would be perfectly happy to see this entity, the Department of Education, go away. However, they, as any blind squirrel might do, did something that's at least relatively useful and put together what's called the consultant performance review report for fiscal year 2023. This was reported 31824, made the media here just last week. And essentially, there's a lot of serious problems within New Mexico's public school system in terms of the way various issues are handled. I will first note the, the track record here. Commendations, zero. So they didn't, we didn't do anything deserving of merits or recognition. Not surprising considering we are 52nd in education here in New Mexico. We met 15 requirements. They offered eight recommendations and action was required in 60 different areas. That's six O different areas. And, you know, this isn't necessarily earth shattering and mind blowing to anybody who looks at New Mexico's education system. But I'll offer some of the lowlights in particular, and we can talk about a few of the better things that, that actually happened in this report. But the first thing that caught my attention was accounting systems and fiscal controls. There's either met requirements with commendation, that's what, we didn't get that, met requirements, that's when we did okay. Met requirements with recommendation and then action required. A lot of action required, as I said earlier, starting off with accounting systems and fiscal controls. And I just, my mind immediately jumps to Cheryl Williams Stapleton and the ways in which she stole money from Albuquerque Public Schools, but also the federal governments. And this is in the financial management area. There was also issues with an action required in internal controls, equipment and supplies management, risk assessments and sub recipients monitoring. I think those are all relevant areas to the Cheryl Williams Stapleton scandal.
Yeah, it certainly sounds like it. And you know, as you say, the Department of Education, it's one of those mixed, mixed bag. But at least they figured out what, you know, we've known and, you know, everyone's known for quite a while that things are not right in New Mexico. And so it gets the point where the other thing is, is that, you know, how are these problems addressed? And because, you know, at some level, not pointing out a problem is something that's a part of the process of improvement, knowing what's wrong. But you know, there is also, and I don't know if this is, is New Mexico not known what's wrong or we don't care. If you don't care, that's a big problem. And then there's kind of a thing that's called the knowing-doing gap. You know what you need to do, you're just not going to do it. So it is interesting, but at least, you know, again, the things that are, something that's that obvious in New Mexico, at least they caught on to that one.
Yeah, now I'm going to dive into a few of the okay things and then we've got a much longer list of, of things that need action. But audit requirements, met requirements, record and information management, also personnel procurement, indirect cost, whatever that means. And that's really, you know, pretty much exhaustive in terms of the things, there's a few, let's see, maintenance of effort, maintenance of equity, equitable services, emergency assistance to non-public schools and emergency assistance to non. Oh, that's from governor's office and state education agency. So both, really after that, it is, it is slim pickings for positive issues here. And I specifically want to highlight state assessment requirements, the accountability system, identification of schools, presumably those that need help, support for school improvements. State local report cards, school-wide programs, consolidation of funds and then school-wide programs. All of these need action. And then something that's near and dear to my heart is the, the teachers and their training issues. Just a lot of problems with preparing, training and recruiting high quality teachers, principals and other school leaders across all levels of New Mexico education need action. So while this, a lot of this report is in bureaucrat speak and, you know, coming from a federal government perspective, that's not obviously expert at managing its own affairs, to say the least. Certainly a worthwhile report when you talk about the outcomes at New Mexico's school systems and some of the gaping holes and things that are just not being done in our school system. So it got some attention, at least Albuquerque Journal had a, had an article about it as usual. I don't think the reporters got the critical factors of what they're really, you know, dealing with here and just how really significant the need is for improvements across the state of New Mexico and in our schools.
Yeah, and then Paul, you know, it's one of those, there's a lot of organizations that have been pointing out shortcomings in the education system of New Mexico, but they weren't the federal government. And it seems like New Mexico, state government in particular, that's one of the entities, because we're so dependent on the federal government, they actually occasionally pay attention to them. You know, not always, but you know, maybe some good will come out of this and some emphasis on improving education. Maybe we'll see, even see a special session on an improving education one of these years, so.
Wouldn't that be a hoot to finally deal with in a directed manner? Education, that would be a unusual situation to say like, oh, and this, this dovetails directly into the next topic. But there was one issue regarding early childhood education, support and coordination also needed action. Which brings me to my very next topic, according to a new report, and I believe it's the same report we dealt with last year, early education research, annual state of preschool 2023 yearbook. Now, this report is fatally flawed for the same reasons as we talked about last year. And that the fact that New Mexico, according to the Santa Fe New Mexican, is in the top quarter nationwide in access to state-funded preschool, does not mean that this preschool is a good use of our money, that it's resulting in improved outcomes. It simply says that New Mexico kids are, if you will, taking advantage of the opportunity presented to them for free daycare, I mean, free pre-K. So no surprise there, but would like to see a little bit more in the way of outcomes from all this pre-K spending.
Yeah, and it is interesting, Paul, you know, and a lot of New Mexico, and this is another example, we focused as a state an awful lot on the inputs to the education system. Lots of discussion of funding, new programs, et cetera, et cetera. Not so much on whether it's working and whether it's even moving us in the right direction. And it does sound like this may be another area, because you know, there's many people that just take it as a matter of faith, not as a matter of research and reporting. That pre-K will do marvelous things for New Mexico. And as you alluded to, there's certainly research out there to the contrary.
And I was interacting with somebody online on social media about this. And I said, you know, it would be nice if we had some kind of results, proven results from all of this money being spent on education, especially pre-K. And the response I got was, well, this program hasn't been around for that long. Well, okay, no, we haven't been tapping the permanent fund for that long to pay for universal pre-K. But what people don't know is that the state has been involved in funding pre-K for thousands of New Mexico kids since way back in 2005. That's a good, long time ago. That's really, you know, we're talking about kids who started out in that program and pre-K who are not just in college, but out of college, assuming that they got to that point. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of good things that can be done outside of a college. But the fact is, is that this system's been in place in some way, shape or form, at least starting out in 2005 and has grown dramatically over the decades. I have not seen a single study to take on specifically the pre-K issue here in New Mexico and whether we're seeing really significant improvement in student outcomes. I mean, let's face it, the studies that we have seen don't bode well, mostly the National Assessment of Educational Progress, the nation's report card found us at 52nd in the nation, dead last in all four category study. But the, the money that we've been spending has just grown and grown and grown over the decades. But even going back to significant number of children back in 2005, I find their lack of interest in looking at results from these pre-K programs to be rather perplexing, but not, not perplexing, given the way government tends to work here in New Mexico.
Yeah, and it does sound like, you know, with a little bit of desire, there's kind of a natural experiment here. You know, you have records presumably back that far as to, you know, take a sampling of several hundred of the students who went through the, who went through this program and tried to match them up with several hundred that are as close as possible to not. And you know, that's the sort of thing that you could get a lot of insight. But then again, maybe they don't want to know because maybe they're afraid what they'll find out. And so you're not going to study something if you're a crowd or if you're, you know, lobbying for the teachers union, you just, you don't know whether it works, but you don't really care as long as the program keeps getting funded.
Yeah. And that's, again, the way things unfortunately all too common, commonly work when it comes to education in New Mexico. And, you know, it's a, it's a system. I will only reiterate that the unions controlled it, as far as I can tell, primarily operates for the benefit of the, the unions and the democratic party in particular, which controls New Mexico and has for nearly 100 years. It's going to take big changes, nothing small. In fact, you know, Martinez trying the Mississippi model, that, that I think would have been a good starting point. But I think we need to fundamentally transform education in a much more child-driven, child-centered, parentally organized way. And other states keep going forward on that path, something on the order of 13 or so states. It seems like every few weeks you have a new one that has embraced some real aggressive form of school choice, like, like savings accounts, education savings accounts or others. And we're just focused on continuing the same old approach.
Keep it on.
Yep, so our politicians, and I know this kind of actually fits, although it's economically speaking, our politicians are betting on losers. Thankfully, they haven't resorted to taking state funds to the racetracks, although given their outcomes, it would seem like that's about par for the course. But I'm talking about, you know, years ago, going back to things like Eclipse Aviation, which. An organization called Good Jobs First, kind of a lefty organization, anti corporate welfare, did a report and said that they valued the subsidies given to Eclipse Aviation at $100 million. You had Shot Solar, you've had others, another Richardson era special is the Spaceports. And, you know, we don't talk a lot about the stock market or stock prices, but when it comes to companies that New Mexico has, which you would label as a very special relationship. Virgin Galactic is really one of them that comes to mind because the spaceport was built for Virgin Galactic and Richard Branson. There's been a lot of attempts to pull back from that mindset. But, you know, we really truly did build that runway and that facility for Spaceport America, for, for Virgin Galactic. It's not good because Virgin Galactic is in what I would have to call a massive heap of trouble. Back in 2021, the share price for Virgin Galactic was around $55. They'd gone public and there's a lot of optimism surrounding that company, which by the way, their ticker symbol is S P C E. You can go on to, I use, as I've said before, yahoo finance, finance dot yahoo dot com. And you can find out all kinds of interesting things about the stock market, oil prices, et cetera, et cetera. And of course, we spent $275 million and counting at Spaceport America. And of course, they, as we noted at the time, Virgin Galactic has feasted their space tourism flights as of early this year. And now we're just kind of in this holding pattern, literally and figuratively. Well, let's put it this way, the shareholders ain't happy, Wally. Shares of Virgin Galactic have been trading below the magical $1 number, which the understanding I have, and I don't know that this is a law or a rule, but the New York Stock Exchange, if you trade below a buck for something on the order of a month, they will delist you. So what I think Virgin Galactic may try is a reverse stock split, so some kind of share consolidation of Virgin Galactic in order to prop their share price up to get it over a dollar so they're not delisted. But I'm not sure if this is the death throes of Virgin Galactic, but when your stock is trading at 84 cents a share, as it was $55 before, that's, that's no good.
Well, Paul, and you know, you alluded to it a bit, you know, we don't talk about the stock market a whole lot, but the stock market, it provides a valuable function. And it's even more important for these publicly traded companies that continually need capital, because they're either in the startup, the development stage, or the early revenue stages of their business, where they need, they need a lot of external investment. And what happens is those companies, you know, when, when they need all that money and their stock price is so low, that means their existing investors to date think that, that it's a bad bet and it just becomes much more expensive. And so as important as the stock market is, you know, for all publicly traded companies, for companies that are in the development stages, like a lot of tech companies, including Virgin Galactic, you know, this, this definitely spells trouble for them. But I do think the, the writing's been on the wall, particularly when they said they needed to develop, develop a new space frame to fly, because the existing one could not get the amount of flights in, in any given period of time for them to be anywhere approaching, you know, profitability before they were out. So yeah, this is not good news for them that their stock is so low. And yeah, you know, doing the reverse stock split might keep them on the New York Stock Exchange, but they do need to find investors that believe that it's worthwhile to give them money to develop a new, a new space vehicle or it may not, you know, they may not be long for the world, so.
Exactly. And they're also involved in litigation with Boeing and. Exactly. And, uh, they're also involved in litigation with Boeing, and there's all kinds of challenges facing Virgin Galactic. And, uh, yeah, any idea that that is not a serious, serious challenge for the investment that New Mexico taxpayers have made in, uh, Spaceport America over the last, uh, couple of decades. Uh, you know, they need to understand that this entire thing was built with one company in mind, and there that company is teetering on the precipice. So, um, not, we could talk about a conversation we had a week or two ago, Wally, and maybe, uh, the state of New Mexico's State Investment Council and some of these funds, uh, get involved in propping up Virgin Galactic. It's kind of, uh, one glove putting on the other. We don't, we don't want to recommend anything. So S I C members, if you're listening to this, please disregard that last bit of advice because I think Virgin Galactic is a horrible investment. But, um, moving forward, and, uh, you know, it's kind of like, uh, Ebenezer Scrooge here. We're trying to give the ghost of Christmas past, and now we're coming up on the ghost of Christmas future. And, uh, that future is approaching in the form of Maxeon Solar, which, um, until Joe Monahan, of all people, wrote something about this, uh, and I encountered this article. I was pretty stunned to see, uh, what is happening with Maxeon Solar. Well, first and foremost, it's it's worth noting, who the heck is Maxeon Solar? There's solar company out of Singapore. Uh, New Mexico has big plans, specifically, uh, our governor, Michelle Lujan Grisham, has real big plans, uh, to provide a two-point-four billion-dollar industrial revenue bond, that's billion with a B, by the way, and twenty million dollars in direct lead-up funding for a manufacturing facility for solar panels from this company called Maxeon, M A X E O N. And by the way, if you're a stock watcher, you can go to M A X N and see the, uh, all the gory details of what's going on with Maxeon because, uh, it's maybe not quite at the crisis of, uh, uh, Virgin Galactic. But my, uh, my point in bringing this up is that, uh, this is another stock that was at fifty bucks a share back in two thousand and twenty-one. The share share price when the stock market, uh, opens, uh, this week, a dollar eighty-two. Uh, and one last thing before I hand it over to you, Wally, uh, it, we're arguably in the greatest praise surrounding. This is like the, um, I don't know, pet rock of the sixties. You know, wind and solar are getting all kinds of money. I I I guess the pet rock never received government subsidies. But, you know, the the point remains is that this is a irrational era of irrational exuberance for wind and solar companies with, uh, politicians like Joe Biden and, uh, other, you know, folks like Michelle Lujan Grisham, who are pumping hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars every single year into these, uh, businesses and their mandates and all the stuff that's going into these industries. If your stock is going from fifty dollars a share, uh, to a dollar eighty-two, uh, over the span of three, three of the best years in the history of mankind for wind and solar companies, what is a Trump presidency going to look like for Maxeon Solar? And are we, the New Mexico taxpayers, going to just be left holding the bag for yet another boondoggle, Wally?
Well, you know, it, if you look at Maxeon's stock price, uh, the answer appears to be, uh, very likely that is the case. I am not cheering against, uh, this company in any way, shape or form, but the, let's just say it does not look good. And so, um, the other, the other issue is, um, you know, there's, there's a push, and then the, uh, you know, the, uh, Inflation Reduction Act and the Infrastructure Act, uh, they all had these Buy America approaches to, uh, a lot of this government money spent, but a lot of the products were not available here. And so there's an effort to, uh, re-onshore some manufacturing capability. But right now, it looks like, uh, you know, it's a, it's a little bit of tough going for Maxeon in particular. And we'll see, you know, maybe they'll be the one that gets, uh, their solar equipment manufacturing up to speed very quickly in the U.S., and that will turn around very quickly. But as a, uh, overall stock, uh, it's certainly, it's, it has taken a shellacking. You know, not only over the last five years, but over the last, you know, year, year and a half. It's, you know, from thirty down to a, a couple of dollars or less in stock price. And that's a, a mighty big jump in terms of what investors are expecting out of that, that stock from a earnings, revenue and growth point of view going forward.
Yeah, uh, very challenging. And, um, one of the things that's, uh, maybe an issue for Maxeon if they do come and locate here is finding workers who are willing and able to take those jobs. Um, a new Wallet Hub report came out this week, uh, found that New Mexico is the fourth hardest state for employers to find workers in. Uh, number one is Alaska, and I guess that makes sense, uh, just a sparse population over a big wide area. Montana, South Carolina are the only other states. Interestingly enough, Colorado is right after, uh, New Mexico. Uh, it it's, first and foremost, I want to say that, uh, there are worse problems to have, although, uh, if there's ever a economics axiom named after me is going to be, uh, the law, the the new law, if you will, that, uh, before COVID, employers, employees looked for jobs from employers. After COVID, employers look for workers willing to do the job of, and who are qualified among the employees. Uh, the relationship has kind of flipped. Uh, so there are states like California where, uh, they're ranked fifty-one. So, um, the job market in California, it must be easy to find a job, but, uh, either the jobs aren't fitting the skills of the employees, or, uh, maybe workers are fleeing California because their unfriendly tax policies. But apparently, there's a lot of jobs available in California. They're, uh, ranked fifty-first. Uh, you know, New York, forty-six, uh, Connecticut, forty-fifth, New Jersey, fiftieth. So, uh, ironically and interestingly to us and things that we've talked about in the past, Wally, uh, this fits right in with our conversation about workforce participation because not only was this something I wrote about and published on Wednesday morning, uh, last week, it's actually, uh, it was followed quite swiftly, in my experience, by a, uh, a journal article detailing a Legislative Finance Committee report, uh, eighty pages in length, dealing with New Mexico's low workforce participation rate. So, um, again, this is a classic case of we have the jobs, employers want to hire people in New Mexico, but there are not enough warm bodies, uh, with willingness to and ability to work. Uh, so before I hand it to you, Wally, here are the findings from the LFC's report. There are two hundred and six thousand able-bodied, prime working age people in New Mexico who are not formally employed. That right there, mind-blowing. New Mexico has the third lowest male labor force participation rate in two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, and it, the report goes on, and it says, "Low male workforce participation is particularly concerning for New Mexico because it negatively affects individual happiness and productivity, family formation and household income." Uh, New Mexicans across all levels of educational attainment are less likely to participate in the labor force. But of course, as you might imagine, uh, there's a big difference between, uh, those, uh, with high school degree or equivalents and below. So, uh, those people are the, obviously, the most challenged in the workforce. Uh, and then, "Labor force participation correlates with economic growth, crime reduction, and increased average per capita earned income." Uh, unfortunately, the report did not do much in the way of, uh, I mean, they, they talked about the bureaucracies, the attempt to get jobs for people and match people. I I don't think those are, um, those are going to get the job done. Of course, this is the LFC, this is a legislative body report, so they're ultimately working for the people who make the laws of New Mexico. And if the Rio Grande Foundation were putting the same report together, I'd talk about New Mexico's generous welfare programs, uh, taxation and occupational licensure issues. And finally, and of course, we just got done talking about the education system. So, uh, there's a lot of meat there, Wally, but, uh, take it away.
Well, you know, the the idea about, uh, you don't get what you want, you get what you incentivize, kind of, uh, kind of is what I think the situation may be in New Mexico. And, uh, I really do think it merits, uh, it merits an investigation. You know, it's like of things that, uh, uh, things we could study in addition to what programs, uh, help actually improve educational attainment. This would be a very interesting one to know is that, uh, if somebody's able-bodied of of working age and not working, what are all the reasons and are, what are we doing as a state, as you alluded to? Things like, you know, uh, generous, generous, uh, welfare benefits than, that might not make it, you know, even worthwhile to, uh, work for a lot of people. So I don't know. And, you know, the fact that California does have a lot of jobs, but California has a lot of problems, uh, and one of the problems that they have, uh, in addition to, you know, their homelessness, crime, high taxes, to name a few, is their housing prices, you know, are astronomical. You know, I I know there's a lot of jobs in San Jose, California, and just, uh, just for fun, I, uh, I went to Realtor dot com, did San Jose, and on the first page, we have a one-bedroom, one-bath, five-hundred-and-twenty-two-square-foot home, uh, that really, it's, looks like it's in the back of a parking lot, and it does not look like much, seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand dollars. So, you know, those, you could see somebody saying, hey, maybe that seventy-five-thousand-dollar job in, uh, in San Jose may not be worth my while, but there are a lot of, you know, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy-thousand dollar jobs in New Mexico that are going wanting, and, you know, you can definitely afford to live in our state for that, you know, for that kind of housing cost.
Yeah, and, uh, that's something that constantly comes up in, uh, when we were discussing, for example, right-to-work because right-to-work tends to be on the books in states with relatively lower income levels, but they're also much lower-cost places to live. Uh, and, you know, you have to really have state policies. Uh, you can be a relatively high-cost state and be successful. Colorado, right to our north, has very high incomes and relatively high expenditure expenses, uh, for people to live there. Uh, I'm not saying it's ideal, but it is a reality in Colorado. Or you can be a low-cost, low-income state, and, uh, uh, there's, you know, Texas is a relative state of lower incomes. Uh, they also, you know, their their national or state average gets dragged down because they have a large number of immigrants flowing in there. California also does have that, um. So we, uh, you know, just need to get more people off the sidelines in New Mexico, get them into the workforce, uh, help some of these employers find workers. And of course, you know, I I think the immigration issue we talked about, uh, with New Mexico being the only state not attracting immigrants, and that's a dicey one, obviously, politically. Um, it's not that there's not enough immigrants coming into the country right now, especially legally. Uh, we could talk about legal immigration, but ultimately, uh, we need to get people to work in New Mexico, and that's just a fact. And, uh, the aforementioned challenges that we face with our education system and, uh, and other problems, uh, you know, and of, of course, it was, uh, welcomed from the LFC that they specifically called out crime. I don't see the governor putting workforce participation on the, uh, call for the special session or any future session. Uh, again, the the challenges of addressing that involve getting, uh, people who, I think, government has done a very good job of making life comfortable for them on the government dole and, uh, trying to bring people off of the government dole. That is, that's not an easy or comfortable process, I don't think, for the recipient or the politician.
Well, you know, Paul, one of the last very successful efforts nationwide for that was, uh, during the Clinton administration, his policies actually went a long way towards can helping to get people off of welfare. But, you know, we don't, and putting work requirements and other things like that. But, you know, it seems like we're in a place now, uh, the progressive mindset that's in the Democrat Party is to, uh, put any requirements on anybody for anything does not seem like, uh, that's a a welcome policy direction.
Yeah. All right. Well, uh, wrapping up here, I had an opinion piece on, uh, the Biden liquefied natural gas or LNG policies. That one ran in the Albuquerque Journal on Sunday, and I believe the Sun News down in Las Cruces. Uh, yeah, we talked about it at some length last week. It's a really awful policy for, uh, a number of reasons. But, uh, I just want to reiterate these, uh, those quotes from Tom Udall back in two thousand and fourteen, uh, when, you know, one of the lions of the Senate, especially on environmental issues here in New Mexico, uh, touted LNG a- as a real winner for New Mexico and for the nation. And, uh, unfortunately, Biden has put a, uh, a moratorium on permits for these, uh, LNG export facilities. Uh, for those nations that don't have a specific kind of trade agreement with us, it's worth noting. But, uh, check that opinion piece out from the Albuquerque Journal Sunday, Sun News, uh, uh, as well, I believe, on Sunday. And, uh, the Journal's title, they, they changed my title, which is A-OK, as long as they run the piece. Biden administration should recall Tom Udall's support for LNG plants. So, uh, not, not a bad title. I'll take it. All right. Well, uh, Wally, we're going to go ahead and leave it there. Um, lot to talk about, but, uh, it is worth noting that this was our six-hundredth episode. So, uh, it feels like only yesterday, Wally, when we started off on episode one, and now here we are, six hundred episodes deep of Tipping Point, New Mexico, and, uh, you know, that that dreaded six-six-six, episode six-six-six, I don't know, we're gonna have to come up with something.
Yeah, we'll have to, yeah, we'll think long and hard about who you want to get for that. That's a good point.
Yeah, maybe we need to go back and check out episode thirteen and see if anything befell the, uh, the, uh, the thirteenth episode, uh, guests or whatever we were talking about at that time. But, uh, we'll leave it there, and, uh, thanks to all who listened, uh, to this week's episode. Find all episodes at tippingpointnn.com or at the Rio Grande Foundation's YouTube channel. Subscribe to the show at Apple Stitcher or tell Google Home to play Tipping Point, New Mexico. Thanks to Pat Three Marketing for producing this show.